All right, we're ready. Yeah.
We're good.
Okay. I will call the meeting to order. And if there's no objection, we will move the election of board and vice chair to right now. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that Barbara Graham Adams is the chair for this next year, and Andrea Larson is vice chair again.
Well, at the risk of sounding egotistical, I second the motion.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Very none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
If both, motion carries five to zero. Did you vote aye?
No.
Did you go no?
No.
Okay, motion carries four with one person not voting. All right. Now, Barbara, you are.
Thank you, Mark, for serving for last year and continuing to be a part of the board, so we appreciate you. We have a shared vision in the Frederick School District that's to provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meeting. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings and work sessions are meetings of the board held in public, providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussion and action. In an effort to conduct official board business, we ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questioning comments and unnecessary noise while the board conducts a meeting. There is an opportunity for citizen comments tonight, and the board look forward to hearing from those who have signed up. I will share some reminders when we get to that portion of the meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area of the district website. So, at this point, do it on flat.
By the legions to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with every day new justice brought.
And did we have any public comments today? No? So, we'll jump on into approving of the minutes from last month. And we have a motion to approve the minutes from June.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the work session and regular session on June 17, 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none. Can we take a vote for the approval? All in. Go ahead.
You go ahead and say it. All in favor.
All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We have aye, five, two zero. Thank you. All right, so we're up to reports. And. Orchard Holt?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, we'll have Heidi Darson reporting.
Yeah, I'm Heidi, and this is Manny. I'm the regional clinic manager for Langtown for Orchid Health. And Manny is our community officer. So, we're happy to be here just to come in and kind of make a connection with everybody and say hi, let you know what Orchid Health is if you don't already. So, we're based on the campus there at the high school perimeter. We serve the entire community all the way out to Nottai, almost out to Action City. So close. And we provide primary care services, immunization, sports physicals, acute care, pretty much anything we can do in-house or we can pop the referrals out. The services are not based on income level for the students, so we see regardless of whether you have health insurance or not. We can see the family is on a sliding scale too. We don't want insurance or money to be a barrier for you. Last year, just a few stats from the school year, and we saw 256 patients that were specific out of the Frederick School District. 157 well-child visits and sports physicals were done within our planning. And that was two providers, so we have two vayliners practitioners. We have Cameron Burtz.
Metzler.
Metzler, I always name wrong, and Vanessa Ramon. And we'll be excited to add a third one by the fall so we can continue to open. It's just about at capacity in piano now, so we'll have a new provider join in at the fall to make sure that we can continue to see everybody. Does anybody have any specific questions for us? Or did you just want like a synopsis of what we did?
We just wanted to put a quick synopsis, I think, or that's what I was looking forward to share with the school board. It's been, we just re-upped our three-year contract, so it concluded June 30th. We resigned for three years, I think, especially with other providers moving out of the community. Just the board made a good decision three years ago. I think it's went well. You know, obviously one contingent of folks that Orchid serves is our students that are in need, but they are the provider in this community out here. And I think it's been a good relationship, so.
We've really enjoyed it, and I see nothing but growth for us. Goal for 2025 would be to open a secondary location. So, we'll continue on the grounds for Lira and make sure that we have something specifically for students, but for the families, we will probably open in one of the old clinics under downland territorial. With losing organ medical group physicians, we've just been flooded with patients wanting to stay in the community, and we want to continue to serve that. So, we're still open to new patients and can still do a day or next day acute care appointments, so you don't have to go into town for any of those types of things. We'll be doing sports physical days here coming up late in August. And then Manny actually goes into each of the schools on registration days and is available to let the community know where our services are.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what we do? So, as a community health worker, I am kind of the resident fixer. I'm a social worker, so I advocate resources, I advocate services inside and outside of the clinic. I help our patients navigate systems, so if they don't understand organ health plan or SNAP benefits or how to register with one of their referrals, it's one of those roles that I can fill. Just anything that's not specifically related to medical or specifically related to mental health, I try to jump in and support the patients and their families. At Orchid, we're not just looking at the medical piece. We're also looking at the environment where we kind of coined the phrase, we're looking at whole person health. So, there's all these other environmental factors that come back to your medical and the mental health. And my role is to help mitigate those factors, to provide that support for our patients.
And you haven't seen us at our Vice Produce Plus. We have a really great program that Manny does where she brings fresh produce out.
Absolutely, so that happens on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Pickup is between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. We do encourage our patients to register for the program just because that way we have, we know we can order enough food to come out and serve a community with, so.
I think we have, there's a health fair. We've got a couple of other events.
So, I'm trying to organize a health fair. It's going to happen in conjunction with the Vena race. The name of the actual race itself is only being read right now. But on August 17th, the race will start at City Park, and I'm trying to get folks from the local community as well as from Eugene to come out and just educate the community about the services that they could have access to. So, hoping, I haven't got a lot of response yet, but we've got about eight vendors, eight folks willing to come out and set up with us, so it's a good start.
If you're not familiar with Yak, which was at high school last year, AJ was in charge of the Yak program. She can be with us tonight because she's actually running Lake Clinic tonight. So, we do clinic late until 7:00 p.m. on Mondays and Tuesdays. If any acute care event were available for students late or families. So, she's actually our PSS club founder, so she's in charge of that. And she worked with Yak today, this last school year to develop a flyer. They really, the kids really wanted to focus on counseling and what services were available. So, she was able to kind of guide them through the process of doing a CAMP design and show them step by step what that looks like. They were super successful with it. We were super proud of them. So, these are out in all of the schools.
And it's at the high school. I'm not 100% sure on that, to be honest.
I'm not sure.
But the high school students, the content that's on these, they came up with the content on their own with just a little bit of guidance and support. So, they were all very proud of that, and we were very proud of them for being able to come together and make this so that they could educate their peers on what was available.
Distribution context of the school board, so Yak is Youth Advisory Council. There's a high school staff member that, we're looking for a new one for this next year, right? Past, or last year it was Mr. Hybert. And then he helps manage a group of students that meet with folks from Orchid and just talk about things that the students would like to see, like give you that information.
If you guys would like to look at the flyer they created, we can get your feedback.
Thanks a bunch for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. If anybody has questions, you can put that in email or we'll definitely answer them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Chance Chat Charts Wells, 2023 to 2024 report by Bo.
All right, I'm Bo Gottfried. I'm the Food Service for Char Wells. Like, cover this, the food service for these four schools plus West Lang Tech, which is changing a bit. We're going to do a quick review. First of all, I want to thank you for the confidence and the renewal for Char Wells for the next five years. We really appreciate that. I think it's a great partnership, and it's just growing better. Next. This year? I didn't know I did that. Sorry. I didn't know. I don't, anyway. We had, we were very lucky this year. We had most of our staff returning from last year. We just had one new employee, which was community, and her children go to Vena. So, she was unfortunately wanting to work at Vena, but we have a full staff there, so she's working at the high school. Last, this year, again, we had, we added a fourth daily menu option at elementary school. So, we had a salad, we had a hot entree, we had a cold sandwich, and then we had something all the kids usually liked, chicken nuggets, hamburgers, stuff like that. Having a little bit more options for them. The holiday meals, we did about 45 more this year than in 2023, which we brought back the first year last year. And the barbecue this year did not see a significant increase. Unfortunately, I was not able to take pictures of the holiday menu, and I was absent for the barbecue. I had a county emergency that I had close to, so we used pictures from 2023. This year, the high school and the middle school, Char Wells develops a lot of wonderful programs. And one of the programs they developed this year, or last year, was called Global Eats. We had four wonderful chefs throughout the world present menus for us to follow, foods for the kids to try. So, we had authentic foods from Mexico, Italy, China. We were not able to do India because of the spice palette situation that we have. So, every Friday for a couple of months, we had a different option. Gavin, who was a member of your board for a while, was kind of upset that he missed one of them. He enjoyed it immensely. And they were very popular. This year, we're going to incorporate samples at the elementary school. I just, when I looked at the menus and the recipes, I just didn't think that the elementary school students would, other than the St. Martin Hot Dog, which has bacon on it, wouldn't want to try that as their only option. So, this year, we're going to redo the world base. We're going to do samples at the elementary school. We also conducted surveys. We did principal surveys, student surveys, and parent surveys. The responses from the high school wasn't the greatest, but the parents' survey returned very well. And what we're looking for is just some feedback on what we're doing right, what they want to see. This is just an example of the situation, why, how many times do your child eat at the school, and why they don't eat at the school? So, we can address those situations. And these are the foods that they all wanted, or the list that they tried. Fresh fruit and fresh vegetables were the biggest hit. Typos of burritos and nachos were there too. So, what that's telling me is that, yes, we're offering fresh vegetables and fresh fruits daily. We're not offering enough variety, so we're going to look at doing off some different fruits this year, just to increase those. Our goal for 23, 24, or looking forward, I'm sorry, I did change that obviously, the 24, 25, Compass, which is the main company of Char Wells, is variant into reduction of paper and plastics. We want to make sure that we're not affecting the world. So, our goal is to reduce as much paper and plastics that we have. So, last year, we went also over at the elementary school and the middle schools. We haven't found a way to do that successfully at the high school yet just because they don't have a place to do tray returns. But we're looking for some ideas. We're going to increase the variety in the breakfast meals. Last year, we added some more hot meals, so about four or five times a month, sometimes six, they have hot options at breakfast. This year, we're going to be able to do a little bit more. The structure of the state reimbursements has allowed us to do, have a little bit more monies available for breakfast items. Getting the knitting ready, basically, last year, it took us three breakfasts, all five, for one reimbursable meal. This year, so I'm going to be two. So, basically, we went from a dollar, ten, to serve a breakfast to about a dollar, probably about $2. So, we have a little bit more options. As requested in the surveys, we're going to increase some fresh fruits, vegetables, increase burritos. Char Wells has an amazing amount of events. They have Mood Boost, which is, we've done that a couple of times. They have little creatures that show what this food does to you. It's broccoli, it wakes you up, makes you mind a little bit better. So, we're going to incorporate those. They have the power ups, and some other events that we're going to incorporate some of. Our biggest challenge this year was the speed of service at the middle school. We had the hot side and the cold side, and the hot side was very popular and the cold side wasn't. Well, if I could measure right, we had solved that problem, but I didn't measure correctly, so I've got to come up with a solution and be able to have hot on both sides. So, we could do pizza and hamburgers on the side, and then a main entree and a broth. So, they just don't go to one line. Also, we do a monthly newsletter, and I, how should I say it, for doing monthly newsletters. And I'm going to do my best to improve those, get some more information on those affairs. Any questions?
Maybe touch briefly on how meals will be free next year for all students.
Yeah, with the new program at Orchid, all meals are going to be free. So, Gary and I need to get together, talk a little bit about if they want a second entree, how that's going to happen, if we can do that. But breakfast and lunch will all be free for all students.
We'll reschedule a meeting here shortly. We have a couple of problems to solve. One, there's a lot of kids and families that have significant debt, a couple dollars to $1,000. Essentially, you know, kids go eat every day for free and never pay their bill. Same time, we also have folks that have positive money and now have credit. So, we need to figure out what we're going to do with those credit sites. Give parents an option to get refunded, possibly donate to those that have bills. So, we'll be working out something in the next month or so. By school registration, probably have a plan in place.
And I've got to do some more registration on that. I was at a meeting in Denver. And the new program we're doing supposedly doesn't allow us to have accounts. But I kind of question that, so.
Doesn't allow us to have what?
Account, money on account, so if they wanted a second meal, how do you do that?
Yeah.
So, I've got to do some more research on that just to make sure that we're in compliance. Because when I first came, we had somewhere seamless option that just checked the work. You had a complete meal, you had your components that you needed, you were on your way. This year, we need to decide if we're going to still use the register system to prevent people from having multiple meals. Or if we're going to have multiple meals, is the district okay with that? Or is the state is not, so we'll have to figure something out. All right?
Thank you, Bo.
Next up?
All right, I just had a quick thing I wanted to talk about. For Priya, for the ServiCite Teachers Union, we're going to be doing a fundraiser, a Papa's Pizza fundraiser. If you have done any of those before. The reason behind doing this, part of the dues money and our budget goes toward awarding a scholarship to graduating senior entering into some sort of program beyond high school. So, whether it's a trade program, community college, or your university, we've always done a scholarship between $500 and $1,000. And as we all know, $500 doesn't get us too much these days. So, my, one of my goals is I don't want that scholarship to ever dip below $1,000. So, we're trying to kind of build money in the account so that it can always remain at $1,000. And if more is raised, we thought about, our executive team met kind of throughout the year, and we discussed maybe we could do two scholarships for seniors or have money at each building and designate money to go towards field trips for students who might not be able to afford it. Like, when I've done a Portland Timbers field trip, you know, different teachers, we always just stepped up and helped pay for students to be able to go on it because we never want students to not be able to go on experiences that they would like to. I did this back in the day when I took students to Spain, and it was pretty successful. So, the date on it is August 28th. I was going to leave a few flyers here.
You email me that.
Yeah. So, it's the West 11th location, and basically 50% of the value of the food comes directly back to Priya, and 25% of all gifts or tickets purchased would come back to Priya as well. You just have to bring the flyer. You can also find it on their website. If you've ever gone to their website, you just have to pick the West 11th location, go to fundraiser, switch it to August, and August 28th is, you'll see Priya on there. So, we look forward to your support, participation, and to see some of you there, and hopefully spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Carpenter?
Okay, I just have one thing in this section, since there's a lot I'm going to be talking about later. And that's our preliminary official statement. It's the document that summarizes the district's financial position and ahead of the sale of bonds. It will be taking place in early August for investors to read. It's a lot of, it's a lot of information. It's around 75 pages. I sent it to you basically just to share it with the board in case you have any interest. So, that is complete. We had our bond rating call last week. Lisa attended and listened. It went well, I thought. The reason it's important, right now, the district is rated, I believe, an A1, which is good. But the higher you can be rated, essentially, it's like a credit report. So, if I go to buy a car, I have great credit, I can get a little better interest rate. If I have lousy credit, it's a lower interest rate. So, these bond ratings, like if you're a real low rating, they're called junk bonds. We're certainly not in that position. An A1 is strong, but if there's a potential to go up a level, saves us a little bit of money. So, we had this two-hour call with Moody's, where they basically just, we do a presentation. Quana and I, from, this gentleman from San Francisco, over Zoom, answered all his questions. And I believe, I don't remember the exact date, but it's towards the end of July that he will respond, connect with our bond council, Viper, Sam, Sandler, our bond underwriters, excuse me, Viper Sandler, and share whether we drop, hold where we're at, or rise. He did say at the end that they're, based on their presentation, there's no chance that our rating is going to drop. So, the floor is kind of where we're at. It might be a slight potential for us to increase, so. Anyhow, that document went out to you today, and it will be shared with investors, I think about a week ahead of a bond sale. You know, it's pretty finalized now. There might be some, a few tweaks, but that will go out, I believe, it's the 30th of July. Potential investors will be able to read that, look it over, and decide if they're going to purchase our bonds on our sale day of August. On the state. Any questions on that?
What are the criteria that they look at for that rate?
It's a lot of criteria. I think the biggest one, I mean, the overarching theme is our ability to repay the debt. So, whether that's our cash reserves, our in-fund balance, those are certainly two of the bigger ones. If a district was, I've heard about districts going, you know, having very little in-fund balance or going into debt and worrying about making payroll, they're not going to have a very high bond rate. It's our, their confidence in our ability to repay the debt. That's all I got.
All right, next up is the approval of the bond management plan, which the board action.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Scott, just mentioned. If you recall, this was shared at our last board meeting by Scott and his partner. Put out, if anyone had any questions. I know I didn't get any. I don't think you had any.
No, Scott.
So, tonight, obviously Scott's here for any questions if you have them, but we're looking to approve the plan, which in summary, basically, just showed you how we're breaking up the projects, kind of the general timeline, how to track money.
Not too much. You know, certainly communications, how we're going to communicate with board with the administration. As was mentioned, the accounting and how that's processed and the account reconciliation. Since we showed you that plan, we've had a second meeting with Quana just to go over all the account codes to make sure everything's going to line up. And then we'll schedule reconciliation meetings every month to make sure that the, all the items that we think have been charged against the bond, you also think have been charged against the bond. Just make sure everything zeros out every other month. We're going to be doing that. But yeah, it's really just about exactly what it says. It's how to manage the bond or what's the plan to manage the bond. Incorporated in that plan, as Gary mentioned, is the proposed schedule. It's, while it's a very detailed schedule, it also is serving as an outlier, sort of batterboards, if you will, for the designers, the contractors, and so forth, and they'll fine tune that as we bring them on board. The schedule is being met right now. Modification statements are received Friday for professional services, surveyors, geotech, et cetera. And Friday, I spent about almost four hours here, walking through about 35 architects and engineers through all your schools and having a pre-proposal meeting and that kind of thing. And their proposals are due towards the latter part of this month. And you, and you have a lot of interest, so that's really good. Incorporated into those RFPs were the budgets as we laid out here so that, so they understand this is the size of projects, nothing's bigger or smaller, so they can judge their capacity based on the status of the plan. So, while it was a draft. So while it was a draft last month, it's already served as, uh, as a guide and instrument over the last thirty days for a lot of documents that have already been pushing out. So, uh, we can certainly make adjustments should you need to, but given we didn't hear any questions or concerns or revisions over the last thirty days, we're soon, we're gonna continue down this path.
So we'll look, uh, again, we asked for board action to approve the bond management plans Scott presented last month.
I would like to. Go ahead. I would like to move to approve the bond management plan.
Quit copying me, Andrea.
Kathleen, as my motion, do you want a second, Andrea?
Yes, I'm having a really hard time hearing, so.
Alright, speak up.
Alright, so we have a, uh, motion and a second, um, and a discussion.
I don't have any questions, please. Okay. I don't have any questions.
Can you speak up so Andrea can hear too?
Okay. What I do want to say is thank you very much.
Yeah.
I went through everything. Very impressive. Um, I actually had no questions at that time.
Good.
Um, so I just wanted to say thank you, and Gary, for everything that you've done, uh, I'm thrilled.
Well, others have passed a bond in May as well, in the state. And if you approve the bond management plan tonight, you're gonna be about six weeks ahead of everybody else. That's a good thing.
Alright, let's take a vote on the bond as was written and presented last month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Kathleen.
I was giving you a hard time.
Okay, thank you all. Um, we have the oversight committee information.
Yeah, so I, I mentioned in my last Friday update, I've pushed out all that information, I've created. You know, months, weeks, months, years to come, there'll be more. But on the left-hand side of our webpage, now there's a bond link. Go to that page, it'll say Bond Twenty Twenty Four. You go there, that's where we'll start to track, and occasionally I'll get documents from Scott. We'll stick on there. Right now, really the only item on there is the bond oversight committee application and the bylaws. So right now on the committee is myself, um, Lisa as the board chair, and Mr. Rose. And then we're looking for at least five, uh, community members. Um, I reached out, uh, to appoint two, and then we're gonna take applications. Um, the two I reached out to, to appoint were one member that has been a hard, a part of the whole process from beginning to end, meaning they were part of the, uh, long-range facility planning process in the community meetings. His name is Tori Macklin. Uh, he's been on the budget committee. They volunteered with TSP, very interested in facilities. And the second person I appointed was Mike Trout, who was the head of the political action committee, volunteered a lot of times to help get the bond passed. Uh, so we will, I don't remember the exact deadline I put on there, but I, uh, kept it open for three weeks, so that's why I've been open a week, so we'll be open for a couple more weeks. Uh, we'll close it, have those applications. Um, in the, in the bylaws document, it kind of outlines some bullet points of what we're looking for from applicants. So I'll get some folks to score those applications based on those criteria. Um, and then we'll notify, uh, the three people that'll be on the committee. I would imagine by the August, um, board meeting, I'll be able to tell you who's, who's on that group. And our first meeting, uh, will be in September, so if you know anybody that's interested, direct them to that spot on the website. Do an application into us. We've already received two applications. So we need one more, and then at least I know we'll have five, July twenty-sixth. July twenty-sixth will be when it closes, as far as things happen. That was just information.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to our next topic here. And that's to declare vacant budget committee positions, and how many positions are we?
Yeah, so we're in a little bit of a unique, because the situation, due to the fact that a couple board, typically, much like school board, um, we don't want all five board members going away at one time and five new ones coming on. Same with budget committee. But we are in that position here, due to the fact that multiple people didn't complete their term, so they stepped in to fill someone's term. So all five budget committee positions are open. Certainly folks that are on the committee can reapply if they haven't served, um, already two, uh, consecutive. So unlike a school board member, where you can be on board for forty years, it's a little bit different here. Uh, I should say, if we didn't have enough applicants and somebody wanted to continue in the board policy, it does allow for someone to continue on. But in general, um, uh, two is the limit. Um, and I have printed here our board, uh, policy on the budget committee. Um, essentially it outlines that at the first board meeting in July, this meeting, we declare the vacant positions. That's what we'll do today. We had, uh, we've already declared one vacant from Anna, who moved out of our district a couple of months ago, so we're declaring four more, um, vacant. We'll receive application. Once you do that tonight, then in the next day or two, I'll get that information, much like the bond oversight committee. Here's how you apply for the budget committee, here's kind of the requirements, et cetera. Uh, so that'll go out later this week. We'll receive applications for almost two months, so policy says through September. Um, and then at the October board meeting, I'll share the applications with the school board. Unlike the bond oversight committee, that's kind of an internal district committee that, you know, all put together. Um, this, the members from the budget committee are selected by the school board. So I'll share their applications with you in October. Um, you can ask any questions, discuss, think about, et cetera. Um, and then, uh, at the November board meeting is where you will appoint the five members based off those app, applications, so. Uh, we're looking ahead here, but we'll have application number one. Somebody wanted to make a motion to have Billy Joe be on the budget committee. Um, nominate him the second. We both, we both wrote the applications like that. Um, I suppose, depending on how many we have, it could just be one motion if we only had four applicants, but that'll be the process. They're open tonight, post later this week, take applications through September, share the applications with you in October, select the folks in November. Any questions there? So I'm looking for, is board action, do we need to identify the positions? Are they numbered?
Call or say for open positions?
Yeah, fine.
Well, one we already declared open last month.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Declared, or now then we'll have five.
Okay. And make a motion to declare four open positions on the budget.
One second.
Motion for, in second, for, um, for open positions. Um, any discussions? Alright, let's take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have five to zero. Okay. Alright, moving on to our next topic, our board self-evaluation and superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, so been communicating with Kristin Miles about this, um, quite a bit over the last month. Uh, it's not that expensive. I think total cost, especially if we're kind of doing these together, so she's only making one trip down, be around fifteen hundred dollars. And we have the budget within the superintendent, uh, board budget to do that. Um, if we go this route, so kind of we'll take it, and my recommendation would be to do both of these. Obviously, it's your decision, uh, but that's what we'll be looking to take action on tonight. Um, for the self, board self-evaluation and the superintendent evaluation. In regards to the board's self-evaluation, if you approve to do that tonight, and that's what you want to do, I'll let Kristin know either tonight or first thing in the morning. Probably by the end of the day tomorrow, she's gonna send you out an email, okay, here's what you guys complete, uh, work on. She'll give you a deadline. I assume it'll be a week, ten days out. She'll get all your reports back, and then she'll come visit us at our retreat, uh, which is pretty scheduled for August, but we're gonna do a calendar change, now that we've agreed to, I think it's July twenty-ninth. Um, she'll come down on the twenty-ninth, go through, um, uh, that process that she described when she was logged into our, uh, meeting, uh, last time. Um, and then the second piece is the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, again, uh, we probably started our day on retreat day, going through the self-evaluation first, uh, then move to the superintendent piece. She shared that OSBA metric. You guys can decide exactly what you want to do, timelines, criteria, surveys, who to survey. Um, and she would help lead that process as well. So, um, I probably would suggest taking these, well, I'll leave it up to you. You can do one motion and approve them both, or neither, or one and not the other, but we definitely make some decisions.
Are we approving the evaluation for you to go ahead and contract with her? Is that what we're doing now?
On the evaluation side, it would just be, well, it's, it's the, the board's contracting essentially with her, with the district. But it's your, she's gonna come down and help, um, bring their tool, their OSBA, uh, superintendent evaluation tool. You can decide what elements you want to use, what not. Um, she'd do all the compiling of the even reports and share information with you. Um, and just discuss, uh, and help lead through that process that would go through the spring when it culminates in April.
Yeah, I had a question on the funding. You mentioned that it's PD, but is that board-specific PD, or would we be taking potentially from teacher?
No, it would, uh, so I, I don't remember the exact amount, but I, when we, and since the board had talked about this several months ago, uh, I budgeted money within the school board's budget specific for this topic, if that's what we want to see.
I didn't want to take a potential teacher.
Definitely not.
You have a question, Lisa?
I do. So I just wanted to, um, Gary, do you know how long Kristen will be here if you approve for superintendent and school board?
Uh, I believe about a half day, so I think we, she could probably get done before lunch, but she'd take the morning, probably, of our retreat.
And will she become, based on our discussion, will she be drafting the questions that are, would be a part of the survey?
I think they have a template.
Okay.
But she'd probably allow you guys, you know, we, we don't like this question, or we'd like to ask this one, because it's more specific to us.
Uh, I make a motion to approve both board self-evaluation and superintendent evaluation. Second down.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, and any additional discussion? Right now, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to the next topic, it's build-in handbook approval.
Yeah, so my board policy, um, you know, several years ago, we went through one document, uh, for the school district, parent-student handbook. I shared it with you, I want to say a month or so, well, maybe not that long ago, um, several weeks ago. Uh, regarding any edits, there was really nothing substantive, uh, mostly just typos, fixing lots of new names, new phone numbers, extension, that kind of thing. I did want to mention that a couple of days ago, Ms. Vandecar brought me a couple more edits that weren't in what, uh, I sent to you. But again, they were mostly, we had a, a new hire, typo she caught. Um, a little change in the tardy policy in regards to, um, I think it's giving maybe kids a few more minutes, first period grace, the first period of the day, um, to allow them to be tardy, as long as they called in early, said I had car trouble or whatever. So again, it's nothing substantive. Um, so once the board approves this, processes, and then again, next week, I'll make all the final tweaks, edits, and then, uh, Michelle and Bree will get to go through the process and get sent to the print shop. Uh, we really try to not, we used to print hundreds of these. Um, but now we really try to give them to kindergartners, and then refer parents to the website where it's posted, if they want to, uh, see it. But try to give out, give out hard copies, or at least make, make some available. So we went from ordering a thousand of these to, uh, basically ordering a hundred and fifty, kind of keeping fifty on hand and giving them to get around.
And you also, I believe you had mentioned that, and that we were gonna add the free lunch too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. I don't know that I, I've done that yet. Um. I will get, I will get somewhere in there, I'm talking.
Any other questions?
Lisa, as, as far as, um, timelines, that's a lot of pages, and I have looked through that once already, but is this something that, um, has to be done tonight?
Um, well, if it isn't, then it wouldn't be ready for it, so no. Um, but it wouldn't be ready for school registration, so if we didn't prove it till August, that wouldn't be enough time for then the next, next day after August for me to get it printed back up.
And so are you talking about the retreat on the twenty-ninth? I mean, that, you know, a couple of days.
Um, I don't, do you think that would be enough time, August twenty-ninth?
Honestly.
July twenty-ninth?
Or, yeah, July. It'd be close. Um, if, you know, board members had reservations, we could do it on the twenty-ninth. It might put at risk that we didn't have them available for school registration, which is by three weeks after that. The, we go through Bechel Print Shop, and they are definitely not, you know, Johnny on the spot to get something for us.
They're gonna be busy probably beginning of the year.
Right, that's, that's the busy time, this, this school, this school stuff, so. Um. You know, we could, if it wasn't ready, I guess what I would do is, uh, refer, uh, to a digital copy, because it could be posted online. If you've approved it on the twenty-ninth, then we could just have hard copies later, if anyone wanted more time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we have a motion for, and approval. Any other questions, or you have other questions? No, I don't have any more questions, okay. Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the handbook.
One second.
We have a motion to, and a second, to approve the build-in handbook, um, as written, with some additional edits to come. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, zero. Alright. Next topic is equity.
Equity committee. Remember, this is a new legislation passed. I brought it up a few times this spring. I don't really have a lot to add here, I just wanted to let you know that this is still on my radar. As a reminder, we have to have this group up and running, um, just over a year from now, so the fall of twenty twenty-five, so we still have lots of time. Um, I have that information I need. I just need to dedicate a few hours to get organized on our application process, and what we're gonna do to reach out to folks, to get a good group of people to commit to this, uh, and get timelines set up of what applications to do. So again, nothing to, specific to share with you here, other than still on my radar. Uh, it's on the list, and probably in the coming months, we'll get this cleaned up, and get, get our process figured out for the next year before this group starts in September of twenty-five. Of course, we still have our district, uh, equity committee, uh, marshal heads, and we have staff on. Um, but this is specifically and responsibly, it was sent Bill nine twenty-two. Um, although I wouldn't swear to that, uh, we'll be in compliance with that when the time arises next fall.
So I'd like to, uh, make a clarification then, or I'd like to ask for clarification. So this would be the one equity committee in the school district?
Um, I don't think so. No, it, it'd just be the one, it would be one that only meets quarterly, so every four months. Um, how we decide to, we have our district committee, uh, that group is gonna decide, do they want to continue to meet monthly, to kind of advise this, um, this overarching one that involves community members, et cetera? Or do we want to push equity committees out to building, you know, let buildings have their own little group to talk about, um, issues, uh, at their own buildings? This committee will just be, to get us in compliance, uh, with the law. Um, there probably will be other sub-building level or district level equity committees that will help provide information to this district group. You know, the district group, that again, only meets four times a year, they're, uh, the way I would hope that this would run, is they might have questions, or the district committee, um, can report to this, you know, overarching group, help answer questions, talk about things they're working on. Um, so no, it won't be the only one.
And then as far as, um, information or any kind of data, then we'll be receiving that also?
Yeah, part of the, part of the requirement of the law is an annual report from this group to the school board.
If there were disputes or questions regarding equity, would that go to this group to be?
Um, well, yeah, that's, that's kind of the reason I think we really need these building level, or ones that are meeting monthly. Um, if they were only meeting quarterly, then they wouldn't really know what they're looking at, or, you know, have, even the right questions to ask. Um, uh, so yes, but I think it will be more of a legwork, um, is done by our, our individual building committees. Um, if the overarching. If the overarching group has questions, that can be kind of a charge to these committees, they go out and collect this data. We're interested in looking at, how are free interludes, reduced lunch kids doing in relation to state assessment or attendance versus other students, and how can we close that gap?
So, as far as information, what I'm referring to is, as far as putting an equity committee together. And I understand that we have to do that, but is there literature about that, that I can research?
Sure, I think I said it to you, but I'll resend, they have an entire document created. And I will give it to the, I'll send it to the whole board. I'll make it a note right now. Hey. State testing data, hadn't shared several years ago. I don't know if I did last year. The document, I gave you a copy of. Each year in August is something I go over with principals, ask them to print it on colored paper. This is a colored document, so I emailed it to you about an hour or so ago, it's a little easier to read. This is something I asked principals to put up in their office, talk with staff about. This is going back eight years, the two years that aren't in here, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. In nineteen twenty, we had no state testing, in twenty twenty-one, we oh, there, you can see it up there, in color. In twenty twenty-one, state testing was vastly changed there. All the tests weren't given, there was only ones at certain grade levels, some grade levels didn't take tests, so. Again, going back sixteen seventeen, when I started this, that is kind of our, our data, and this is just one way that I think is the best way to assess, I shouldn't say it's the best way. It's, it's one way that I think is a good way to assess how how our students relate to students in the state of Oregon, other students in the state of Oregon. And that's, you know, it's impossible to compare to other states, other states have, they give different tests, different questions, they have different funding, different mechanisms. But if you go back to the beginning, you can see in relation to the state standard, so if we look at the very top, top half is math. At Benito Elementary in third grade, in sixteen seventeen, those, that group of, was probably around fifty kids. Scored thirteen percent higher than the state average. And El Myra Elementary, both their, their third graders were twelve points higher than the state average. So that's kind of for each grade level. And at eleventh grade, it was plus thirteen, everything in between there, there was somewhat below the state average, sometimes significantly below the state average. Compiling all those numbers together, was kind of a net of negative seventy-one. Same thing at the bottom, where it's language arts, negative fifty. You can see how over the last eight years, we've continued to make substantive improvement. Oh, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it to you is, this is the first year now, where both are in language arts, we're a little bit over the state average, again, taken as a whole, and significantly over the state average in math, as a whole. Again, it's, it's not a perfect way to look at things, but I think this graph shows two things, one, significant growth over time. And two, allows us to focus on areas where we need, we need improvement, and see that, in fact, there has been significant improvement and change, our students are performing well. Well, it isn't up there, in the document I gave you, and I'm not going to go through all this, but I just kind of gave you thoughts from Gary on state testing, I don't want to make it seem like this is all fact, it's just my opinion. To me, the single most important grade level, we want to know our students are doing well at, is eleventh grade. Those are kids that have been through our system. As you can see on our scale here, our eleventh graders significantly outperform the state average consistently. And I think that says a lot about our system as a whole. There's a lot of variables in between there. It's hard to compare grade level, one grade level to another grade level. You know, a third, we have some, I'm just throwing out numbers, but we have, for example, let's say in fourth grade, we might have thirty-eight percent of our kids on IEP, that's some kind of reading disability, et cetera. In that particular year, that third grade class is probably going to be as strong. For in other grade levels, maybe it's, there's only fourteen percent of the students on IEP, you have some type of disability. Not that students that are on IEPs cannot pass state tests. That definitely isn't the case, but certainly has an impact. The other thing I want to share, you know, this, to me, it's, you know, this is a, this is this is something that, data that people are very interested in, but if it was really important to people, you know, legislators, for example, at the state level. They wouldn't allow things like opt-outs, right? This doesn't, any parent can just say, I don't want my kid to take the assessment. And my experience has been, in particular, as kids get older, it's oftentimes families that are more informed, students who are doing better on tests, my kid, I know he can read, let me opt him out of the state test. Also, they're not factored in here, it definitely affects our data. The second thing is, to me, the most important thing, especially with those younger grades, sure, do we want our third graders learning how to read, absolutely. Especially in the youngest grades, we want our kids enjoying coming to school. The most important thing is reading test scores, math test scores. We would do a lot less field trips, a lot less outdoor schools, fifth grade track meets, dance assemblies, fun events, we'd spend more time reading. We want our youngest kids still enjoying coming to school, liking their teachers, having fun at school. And that leads itself to eleventh graders are succeeding in graduating. And so, again, that's kind of summarized all this information on the back, it's just my perspective. But it's definitely affects the way we operate. So, again, this is a annual document, first admin meeting back, we'll talk about it as a team. See what we can do to continue on this trend, for twenty-four, twenty-five, each year, make some tweaks, try new things. So, I'm just sharing it with you, and we'll probably share it with you next year, this time as well.
Any questions for Gary at this point?
Lisa? Thank you. So I, I just wondered, I was looking at this, and I noticed quite a difference between the Venida Elementary School and the El Myra Elementary.
Well, let's look at one here.
Let's look at math.
Math. Yeah, so if we look at math, third grade this year, both were above the state average, Venida was significantly higher. Fourth grade, Venida, El Myra was, was the only grade level at El Myra where they were below, oh, no. A little bit below, and Venida significantly above. Why is that? I, there's probably a lot of factors. Student population. I don't know the exact data on, again, percentage of students that, that are on IEPs, or, you know, have significant challenges in passing the test. It is something we look at and talk about. I talk, you know, it's a goal of Ms. Perry, yours, the principal's here, to improve her test scores. If you're looking for me to pinpoint, well, here's the reason why. That's hard to do.
So you, you think one of the factors is student population?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, again, without knowing the exact data, but number of students that are on IEP, free and reduced lunch, students, number of kids that have been to preschool before coming into kindergarten. The size of the class, typically, there's fewer students here at El Myra Elementary, for sure, in each grade level. So, you know, a five-student swing, pass to fail is a ten-point swing on that scale. When you're dealing with maybe six, again, I'm throwing out just numbers off the top of my head, but if you're dealing with sixty kids at Venida versus forty kids in a grade level at El Myra. It's, a few students can definitely affect it a lot easier, one way or the other.
So I, I understand that a bit. As a, as a board, is this something that we should know about? I actually am a little bit surprised at the difference between the Venida and the El Myra.
Well, I would, I mean, again, kind of look over time, if this is take third grade. There, in sixteen seventeen, there was one percent difference. In seventeen eighteen, El Myra was twenty-four percentage points higher than Venida. In eighteen nineteen, they were eight percentage points higher. In twenty-one, twenty-two, six lower, thirteen lower, thirteen lower, so, I don't know. You know, I, I need to dive into it a little bit more, to go through each grade level, to see in each subject, what the differences are. I also would say, one thing to keep in mind is that all over behavior classrooms, or here, El Myra Elementary. So some of our, our sixteen most struggling students, who struggle with behaviors in our district, are placed here at El Myra and Fallunder. You know, they're located in those two Bridges classrooms here, definitely affects the population a little bit.
And there's no Bridges?
The Venida kids that are in Bridges classrooms come here to El Myra. Okay.
Moving on to the board retreat, date change, and that applies to board action?
Yeah, so we had some conflicts, we did a little polling, and found a date that would work, but the board adopted that board meeting calendar. Recommended a calendar change to get that moved to the end of June. Or, excuse me, end of July.
July twenty ninth?
Yes, July twenty-two ninth.
I'll make a motion to modify the board calendar to reflect the retreat day on July twenty ninth.
So we have a motion to, Lisa, second?
Second, please.
Okay. We have a motion in the second for the date change of the board retreat. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you, that was my, my change, and so just thank you guys for being flexible and accommodating for that. Not exactly where I would like to be on that day, but thank you guys for changing that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, I muted myself.
Thank you. Five to zero now. Our next topic, annual organization appointments for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five year resolution. Number twenty-four dash twenty-five oh one.
Something we do each July, there's been no changes to this. Do we add one attorney, or? And that was? Oh, okay. Yeah, so we added, with the, with the passage of bond, and us engaging with bond counsel, to identify.
Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-five slash zero.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I, I do have a question on this one. Is, now I understand that there was three, and we added one, because of the bonds, just extra, extra things that are happening.
The very last bullet on there. Was it that one that we added, Hocken?
I believe so.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, actually. Stop that. Regardless, the attorneys that we added were the result of us passing a bond, and they're the attorneys we're going to engage with throughout the bond process. I'll, I'll, will you make a note, we'll look into that tomorrow, I'll email you exactly which one we added tomorrow.
So we have a motion in a second, and we have a vote at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Zero. I believe we have some first readings.
Yep, remember no action on first readings, just for you to look over between now and August meeting. We felt like these were good ones, as we're going down this path of starting to accept lots of bids for lots of projects, these would be ones we need to get updated to the current, match current laws and rules, so. Any questions come up over these in the next month, shoot them to me. And if I can answer them, I'm sure Paula could, and you can answer. Look for people around us.
Personnel, licensed employees resignation, new hires, transfer and others. More action on these, or just?
I'll have to approve all of the hirings for licensed employees.
One second. So we have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of these employees listed here, and any questions? We will take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So we have five to zero. And we have a non-licensed personnel, just.
Yeah, this one doesn't require board action, but some hiring of us temporary summer grounds help, some coaches.
Any late items, those incompliments at this point?
It's like a welcome greeting.
Yes.
Thank you, you just approved your hiring, so you can say.
I'm, I'm really sorry that I'm not there in person, I just had a scheduling issue, and welcome, Bree.
All right, our upcoming event listed here is our summer school from July eighth through August ninth.
Yeah, we're at the start of our second week, take any time, anybody wanting to stop by, feel free, Ms. Perry is here all day, we have a school full of kids running around here. School starts at nine each day.
Shall we provide a blessing?
Blessings for kids, blessings for regular school kids. Is it until noon?
Summer school? Yeah, I think.
Twelve thirty. I think twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty, yeah.
Lunch is, lunch is at eleven thirty, so essentially right after lunch.
And we have a classroom for every grade level, and then two kids classrooms.
So, at this point, we will adjourn. And it's seven thirty-seven, make sure that's important, but thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
And now we're not supposed to make numbers, but great job on those numbers, those impressive testing numbers.